So we have a quorum. We are home stretch here. We should be done by 6:30. That's the maximum amount of time I'm giving to myself. So with that in mind, Ms. Quinn?
Sure. Boy, that's a lot of pressure to kind of go through this very difficult topic, I think, to kind of go through some of the ERFC options that we will be discussing today. Just quickly on the agenda, we're gonna go through and recap some of the findings from the retirement study, as well as some of the savings impact that we've already shared with you regarding some changes for the new hires that was presented on July 21st. And then at the last work session in '17, the board had requested that we go back and calculate what the impact would be for non-vested members, as well as vested members excluding the retirees and those already eligible. For this presentation, we will be talking about non-vested members, but we do not have information available for the vested members, so we will be bringing that back at the December work session. And then the board also asked what the fiscal impact would be if we were to close the ERFC plan to all new hires. So we're gonna be going over all of that today. And then in addition, the board also asked what would be the savings impact for the various different interest crediting rates, and then some updates on what's happening with the Fairfax County retirement system, and then some additional comparative data. I can't talk this evening. Okay, so quickly on the recap of the findings from May 26th Retirement Study.
Ms. Quinn, just to clarify, by the end of discussion tonight, what are you looking from, you know, board members?
Sure. In order to make any changes into our FY '18 budget or incorporate any modifications into our proposed budget, we are looking for board's consensus on any modifications that the board will be considering or requesting staff to pursue, and that consensus we're looking for by December 5th work session, which is next month. And that'll help us incorporate any changes if the board adopts any of the modifications to ERFC, to be able to be reflected in the '18 budget.
So if the board does not come up with any consensus tonight, we has another work session.
In December.
In December. Okay, thank you. Continue on.
Sure. December 5th work session, we will be bringing back the vested employees' information, so we are hoping that the board could provide some direction by then. Okay, so just to quickly recap the findings from the retirement plan study, we compared our benefit values across surrounding school divisions, and the findings were such that our retirement benefit levels were lower than Fairfax County general employees, but higher than surrounding school districts except for DC public schools. And our employee contribution requirements are higher at 8% than any other employers except DC. And then, for the value of the benefits, our employees' contributions make up 50% of the total retirement benefits that is employee-funded. So I'm kind of going through this pretty quickly, because I believe you've, I mean, the board has heard this information multiple times. And the next slide is just an illustration in a chart format that shows the comparison between FCPS and other districts. The very first bar is FCPS, and as you could see, the top portion, which is the red bar, as well as the yellow bar, that is the contribution made by the employees, reflecting the information that was just shared, saying that 50% of the benefits are currently paid by the employees. This slide you've also seen, but we've added a group called "new hires," and we've also categorized our employee groups for ease of referencing them later in the presentation.
Sorry, Ms. Quinn, there are several documents in the...
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's right. Which one are you on? I don't seem to have opened the right one.
It's the November 7th, 2016 presentation. It should be the very last one.
Okay, thank you.
We do have other presentations posted there from the prior work sessions. So again, on this chart, we are grouping our employees into different categories, so that we can reference these groups later on in the presentation. So Group A would be new hires. Group B are your non-vested employees who have less than five years of service. And then Group C, which are your vested but not yet eligible for full-service retirement. The numbers did change slightly from the presentation in September, but the total active employees are still the same as the set of numbers presented in September. So on Slide 7, it's just a summary of the benefit change considerations that we are reviewing. Lowering the interest crediting rate, a member accounts from 5% to 4%. Instituting a minimum retirement age of 55. And increasing the final average salary averaging period from three to five years. And then changing the cost of living adjustment to equal 100% of CPI, but not more than 4%. And we're using two assumptions under CPI. The first assumption is a actual experience over the past 25 years at 2.3%, and then the low inflation rate of 1.5% in assumption B. So all of these benefit change considerations are incorporated into the savings impact in the next couple slides. So this slide represents the savings if we were to make the changes that I had just reviewed in the previous slide for the new hires. So that would be Group A. So under the moderate inflation assumption of 2.3% and low inflation assumption of 1.5%, the first-year savings is very minimal, because we have not turned over any of our active employees, because this is only impacting the new hires. Your short-term savings, which could happen within five to seven years, there's a savings of $3.7 million for moderate inflation of 2.3% and a low inflation of 1.5%, generating $5.8 million. And then in 10-plus years, the savings will range from $9.5 million to $14.8 million. Okay, so these are savings impact for new hires. This is what we had shared with the board back in July, as well as September. Okay? On the next slide, the board asked us to look at non-vested employees, as well as new hires. So this will be Groups A and B impacting more than 8,000 current employees. So when you look at the moderate inflation assumption of 2.3%, the immediate savings or the first-year change is $4.7 million, because we are already impacting 8,000 employees, because those are the non-vested employees. Less than five years. Non-vested employees have less than five years. And then the short-term change is three to six years, the savings can be up to $6 million. And then for long-term, six-plus years, $9.5 million. And then on a low-inflation scenario, the first-year savings can add up to $7.3 million. Short-term change, $9.3 million. And then in long-term, again, $14.8 million. So you're gonna see the same savings in the long-term column for new hires, as well as this scenario, which includes new hires and non-vested. And that is because the savings are a result of how quickly we turn over the demographics within the plan. So the significant difference between Slide 9 and Slide 8 is the short-term range and the long-term range. With the new hires, the short-term range was five to seven years. The previous slide, if you could see long-term estimates, short-term change in estimated contribution rate is five to seven years. It would take five to seven years to generate $3.7 million to $5.8 million. Long-term, 10-plus years, 9.5 to 14.8, depending on the inflation experience. Now, when you include the non-vested employees, the short-term savings can be realized within three to six years, and then long-term savings in six-plus years. So that's the significant difference between this chart and the previous chart. Again, due to the turnover within the plan of new hires and non-vested employees with the new changes.
Just one clarifying question. Did you say that these potential saving numbers we see are inclusive of previous charts?
Yes, it's inclusive of previous chart.
Okay, thank you.
So the first chart is for new hires only. Second chart is new hires and non-vested employees.
And just, I don't think I have to remind the board, but also, you remember in our fiscal forecast for fiscal year '18, we're gonna have to fund an $11.4 million increase in ERFC funding. So that's why I believe this conversation's important, because that's an $11.4 million of additional money. So, you know, where we can offset some of that increase that we're gonna have to cover, it does help in the overall budget.
Going on to the next slide. I know this chart is very difficult to read, and there are lots of lines, but I'm gonna try to simplify it as much as I can.
You might want to start with saying that there have been a couple of inquiries by board members, just to say what-if in some of the conversations.
Yes.
And so I think you're about to answer that question, but this came from probably six or seven different conversations we've had on this.
Right. And this relates to if we were to close the plan completely. So we would be eliminating the defined benefit, ERFC benefit to our employees. So this is closing the plan. Everything we've discussed in the previous charts is really talking about slight changes to plan. This is really the cost to close the plan. Yes, to the new hires. So I'm not gonna go over all the lines, but I do want you to focus on line number two and line number four. There are various different ways that you can fund what we call the closing cost and how we have to fund the unfunded liability. So the actuaries and our government finance association's best practice says that we should be using the funding method number two, which is the red line. So you could kind of see from the first year of closing, all the way out to 33 years, where what the cost would be to close the plan if you follow the red line from year one all the way out to year 33. The blue line, which is number four, is our current open plan. So if we did not make any changes to the current ERFC plan, that is the funding requirement for our current plan. So as you can see, where the arrow is between lines number two and number four, there's $70 million. So the first-year impact of like closing the plan would be $70 million. And the cost to close the plan will be greater than funding the current ERFC plan until you get to approximately year 11. And then you could see the lines inverse from that point forward.
And let me be clear, we're not recommending this in any way, shape, or form, but you all have asked us, and I think we've intimated, we felt like it would require a huge investment of money to fund our liability, but we wanted to answer the question.
So I'm not gonna spend any more time on this chart. I'm gonna go ahead and move on to Slide 11. And Slide 11 is the savings impact on the various interest crediting rates. We also received a question from the board about what would be the cost savings if we were to reduce the interest crediting rate for the member contributions. And we have to keep in mind, the interest is only paid to member accounts when they terminate and withdraw their employee contribution. So if you stay within the system and you receive benefits after you retire, this interest rate does not apply. Okay? So every 1% in the reduction or decrease in the credit rate represents savings of And then we also received a question about what the average crediting rate is, and the national study shows that the average crediting rate is 3.86%, with 4% being the median. Slide 12, just a quick update on what county is doing with their retirement systems. There was a meeting on October 4th, the personnel committee meeting, and they reviewed the changes to their plan that happened back in 2012, but then they recommitted or confirmed that the board supervisor's goal was to have an 80% income replacement, and validated that any potential benefit changes would impact new hires only. And once they made that commitment, they went on to talk about some of the next steps. And as you could see, they're written right on the chart. I'm not gonna spend a lot of time going over and rereading what's on the chart, but they are gonna be reconvening their personnel committee in January of 2017. And then on Slide 13, some additional data that compares what the national study is showing. So final average salary period, we are showing that in the change, the considerations to move from three to five years, but as you can see, most of the plans, three years is the common years that they use for final average salary, and 33% use a five-year period, and the county currently uses a three-year period. So as we go down each of these charts, you'll kind of see what the average is nationally and what the county is also doing with their plans. So cost of living adjustment, 57% of the plans use the fixed-rate COLA, typically 3%, and then the others use a floating-rate COLA tied to CPI, usually with a 3% cap. The county's currently using CPI up to a 4% cap. Minimum retirement age, typically at age 60 or 62. There's a combination of VRS is 90 currently, and then county uses a rule of 85. And then we've already talked about the interest crediting rate, and then significant pension plan reforms. Most changes are prospective, meaning they apply to the new hires, and when county made changes in 2012, it was also applied only to the new hires. And the next slide just shows some additional links to studies where you could find a lot more information about the various different plans. And then last couple slides are really next steps, but we could go ahead and take some questions at this time, and then we could kind of go through the next steps.
Okay, I have two board members, Ms. McLeclain to be followed, Mrs. Huff.
So I guess my first question, because I want to make sure we're coming out of here today, having sort of a general understanding of the purpose of this work session. Is this just an update only? Are you wanting the board to be giving you some initial feedback on next steps from here? I just want to make sure I have a clear idea of what we're supposed to be speaking to today.
I'm glad you asked that question again. You remember the last work session we had? What month was that on ERFC? Was it just last month, September? Not before. There were some pending questions that the board had asked that we didn't yet have. The actuary had not analyzed yet. So I think part of it is, we needed to come back and complete those questions to you all. This is almost complete. There's one other, a couple of other pieces they're still working on, as I referred to earlier. I don't think it hurts to tell us if we're on the right track with regard to, you know, your support for some of these changes if we move ahead. I certainly don't think it hurts to talk about whether or not, and if you support the changes, apply them to new employees only, new employees not vested. And then, of course, next month, I think that there's gonna be some continued opportunity. If you're not ready, not tonight, to talk about that, where we'll have an opportunity to talk about it further.
Thank you. I guess, just where I was two months ago when we had the presentation, I believe I still feel consistent on this one. We aren't necessarily chasing after the national average. What we're really trying to do is make sure we're fair and equitable to our employees compared to those who work on the county side, because whether you work for FCPS or you work for county government, we serve our county citizens. So I think we need, you know, I think there's an importance there for being equitable. And so changes that we would make on our side that would differ from what the board supervisors are doing with their employees makes me a little nervous, because we know that public service, you know, working in the public sector usually is more benefits-rich, not salary-rich. So if we're gonna move toward a model of being more generous in our salaries, less on benefits, I think we would then need to be able to demonstrate to our employees then how that matches with the private sector. So I guess I'm still kind of wanting more of a crosswalk conversation of, you know, here's, you know, employee A who works for FCPS. Here's employee B who works for county services. Here is the, you know, comparable, you know, job performance and, you know, levels of education need and all that, salary, benefits, net effect of total compensation. And then being able to see, as we would make changes to ERFC, what does that do to employee A who represents FCPS and has ERFC versus those who work for the county? It would give me a better visual of what are we actually gonna be doing with any changes here, and is it net neutral or a net negative effect on our employees for any changes we make to ERFC? That being able to draw a parallel, you have a social worker in the school system, you have a social worker in county government, and now suddenly we've made a change that somebody's better off working on the county side for total compensation. That's what's playing out in my mind right now. And I also think that when we're looking at benefits and where we set even the retirement age and things, I think regionally, the information is more meaningful, because we're competing for people who are living and working in the Washington region, not necessarily nationally, because what they might offer all the way in the West Coast may not be anything we would see here. We might be doing better than the West Coast, and we wouldn't want to be chasing that as well.
I'm looking at Dr. Garz, and I don't know if I'm just speaking a very confusing set of thoughts right here, but I'm gonna invite you to say something, because I'm watching...
Are you fearful about what I'm about to say? Because I know you always like to read my body language. I don't know if it's mine or what. This is, you know, I feel like our ERFC is an excellent benefit to our employees, and I agree with what your comment that while it's kind of a trade-off, our employees might not get paid what they're worth, godly. But they're taken care of in a humane way, and they can live a decent life in retirement. I think that's a wonderful trade-off for educators. Now, the challenge gets into the kind of the politics of a tight, tight financial times, when people worry about, you know, sometimes we talk about total compensation, and we're benefits-rich, you know. The only place we have, our insurance plan, is very much like any other insurance plan around us. And so we have to answer these questions, because we often get criticized for ERFC. I don't think it's, in my view, I don't think it's a legitimate criticism, but it's a criticism sometimes that we get. So we have to answer the questions. And I think we've done that comparison you're talking about in some of these reports that we've had. We can pull those back out for you. I think it's very important to note that our employees pay a lot more in than the county employees do. So if we were really concerned about equitable, our poor employees paying a lot, they're paying a lot of money out of their pocket. They pay their ERFC contribution, which is more than what the county has to pay in. Then, of course, their health benefits, social security, VRS, and at the end of the day, all of those things really hit them hard. But that's a good chart to go back to, I guess, to compare, is it not really the same?
So this compares the retirement benefits. And as you could see, the fourth and the fifth bar is Fairfax County Plan, C and D. And you could see that the blue portion of the bar is the employer contribution. So the employees are paying just the top portion of that total benefit, whereas if you look at FCPS employees, as I mentioned earlier, it's almost 50% of the value of the benefit is being paid by the employee.
So I would say, again, because we are so time-limited, but one thought, Mr. Wilson and Mr. Moon, for our next step, would be, I would love to have some understanding of how the county explains how their blue section of the bar is significantly higher even to us. Like, I just, I would want a just ever-so-brief summary or a history of how does it look like that? You know, because I think there, it's, we've been working at equity for all of our employees who work and serve the residents of Fairfax County, and that is definitely not an equitable representation of, you know, benefits, retirement benefits. And I really don't even know how to wrap my brain around why that inequity looks like it does, but I think it's problematic. And so as we're trying to, again, address the fiscal challenges we face as a public school system, I feel like we can't do it in a vacuum. And in context to the county government, I don't know how we can actually do anything other than ask the county to be part of a much larger discussion about how we want to approach salary versus benefits, because we are hearing that this generation of employees, the younger generation, they are not staying in one place for 30-plus years. So we want to absolutely honor all of our retirees and all those who've paid into this thing, but we just can't keep the same model going and going if it turns out that really what people are saying is, honor this and grandfather everybody in, but going forward, it's not always just gonna be about this really rich benefit. They'd probably love it if we could peel back some of it and give it to them, and give them that in their salary, so they're competitive to the marketplace, private sector and above. So that's my one thought, that as we continue to have this conversation, I think we can't do it without the county at the table with it. And the second thing is, I wanted to find out, how have we engaged and included our Fairfax County retirees in all of this discussion? Because they are living it right now, and so I would, I think that they could bring a valuable voice to what it means to be a retiree and these benefits, and then also just, also, I think, give them a feeling of inclusion and comfort to know that they're being part of the conversation, because whatever we decide to do, understandably, they need... Because whatever we decide to do, understandably, they need this to be sustainable. So I just think there could be a benefit if we included them. Have we done that yet, or have we considered doing that?
We've scheduled employee group conversations after we get, after tonight, if we have some kind of indication from the board this is headed in the right direction. Because these are the folks that we potentially would be impacting, right? But we have not, to date, you know, asked retired teachers, certainly. I could guess, probably. You know, I mean, I would tell you, none of us like to have this conversation. We wish we weren't in a position to, you know, change it at all, or are you considering any changes at all?
Well, I think, yeah, it would, again, Mr. Moon, be my advocacy that with, you know, hopefully Dr. Garza's blessing, that we would look at like FCRC or whatever, seeing, you know, talking to our employee organizations if there's the retirement association that they think it makes sense to just, if nothing more, bring insight and inclusion to the conversation. You're right, Dr. Garza, technically speaking, it's more of, you know, incoming employees. But I think that we would still value, benefit from their voices cuz they're living this retirement benefit now and what they could say to.
Ms. McLaughlin, if you could bring that, when we talk about next step.
Sure.
Talking about next step, if you have to be done by 6:30, leave about 10 minutes for next step. Whoever's on my list, I have Ms. Huff and Ms. Heinz. I'm gonna have to limit your time. You cannot have a 15 minutes each. Ms. Huff.
Ms. McGough, when you actually, I know you weren't able to be at the joint board supervisors' meeting with us, but I actually brought up their retirement plan. And I was shot down pretty quickly by Ed Long. I don't know if I remember, so I didn't hear any backup. So I don't know, but I don't know if you remember Susan, he was really saying that that wasn't true and that theirs is not more generous than ours. So I do feel like we need to have the chairs of the boards coming together and having a dialogue on it versus me, you know, stating something I've been being told for months on end and then being told by their chief of. Yeah, but we should be able to explain ourselves. They should be able to explain theirs, and we should be able to explain ourselves. But if they're saying, if we're saying it's true and they're not, we need to have some conversation about it.
Well, I did, just for the record, I did send Chairman Bolova the study that was done that showed this.
Okay, but I still think a dialogue is important so that when we're in public, we can have a conversation about it. So, one of the things.
Just for the record, we sent it to all the board supervisors, our study, last spring. So I just wanna make sure everyone knew that.
One of the next steps from last time was about what the cost and, or the savings impact would be if we increased our minimum age to 60 or 62. I didn't see any report out on that.
That part of the actuarial study was not completed yet, so that is still to come.
So will that be ready in December?
We could, we could ask them if, you know, if they wanna include that along with the vested group.
Okay. I would like it to be included. And so, one of the concerns I have about the conversation, and I agree with what Dr. Garza's saying, is that this is nice and important that we're telling our teachers, well, we're gonna take care of you here when you're retired. But what we keep being told is that, not that we're having a problem with teachers not staying because their retirement's not good enough. We're hearing that we can't hire them because their salary's not good enough. And we have to be able to address the priority of the hiring and retaining versus what we would love to be able to do for everyone all of the time. And so, I just hope we keep that in perspective as we're having this conversation, cuz it's not fun. But we're also trying to make the best decisions we can so we can meet market demand. And the county is not really where we're comparing our teachers to. It's the surrounding school districts. And when we look at where we sit with surrounding school districts, we are working on getting more competitive with salary, and we are more generous in benefits. So, I just wanna make sure that we keep that in perspective. Cuz I know it's not fun, but what we're trying to obtain is hiring and retaining the best teachers. And what they're telling us is, and what the statistics are telling us, is that they're, they want more salary now. So I would love some more of the data on the increase in the retirement age. And I would love to be able to have more dialogue with the board supervisors cuz I do think it's important that we're on the same page about even the information we have. Thank you.
Okay, I have Ms. Heinz to be followed by Mrs. Strauss and Ms. Corbin Sanders.
Okay, thank you. I'll try to be quick. So, the county system, just another minute on that, right? Is different from ours in that it's more of a, it's a social security supplement, whereas we have a true second pension. And then, that's one question. And then also, I think that it's probably fair to say that we're not quite apples-to-apples when it comes to employees. Because when you think about, they have different kinds of employees with different markets. They have police, firefighters, and they have different market concerns, I think, for their employees than we do. So, I'm not sure it's apples-to-apples, but these are important questions. You know, we don't have to spend more time on that. I just wanted to point that out.
I do agree with you, and I'll say something on that, though. When they complain about our plan, it is important for them to also understand that our employees pay more of the share of the plan. I think that's important to point out to them.
True, yeah.
And just to clarify, this, the numbers that we're showing don't include police and firefighters. Those, that's a completely separate retirement system.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you.
And I think when they're saying that their plan is comparable to us, they're looking at statistics that occurred before the hybrid plan went into place. So, the studies that they did looked at our legacy plan, which was designed to be very comparable to the Fairfax County plans at its inception. But the hybrid plan was really the significant event that caused the VRS/ERFC combination now to be much less attractive than the Fairfax County plans.
Gotcha. Okay, all right, thank you. It is complicated. So, I also, I just, I think it's very true in talking to teachers and principals out there that the ERFC does help us hang on to our mid- and late-career teachers. So the. Yeah, every time, I mean, I just hear that from everyone then. Yeah, those are the teachers that we've spent the most time in and invested the most in professional development and experience. And the fact that we're losing them in mid- and late-career to surrounding counties just shows that that gap in salary is so significant. They're willing to walk away from further investment in their ERFC. But if we don't have it, then to me, that's gonna be even more of a challenge than already we have. Slides eight and nine show us the savings, right? If we make these changes on slide seven. What I'm wondering about that, are the savings in constant dollars?
No, these are just estimates. And assumption A uses the average COLA from past 25 years. And assumption B uses a low inflation environment. So, when we talked about recommending a change to the COLA to be CPI up to 4%, the actuaries will actually calculate, they'll redo the valuation using the experience plus probably some flexibility or, lack of a better term, a buffer because they wanna ensure that the assumptions are gonna be what we experience. Cuz if they use a low inflation environment and that doesn't come in, we're gonna have a higher employer contribution the following year. So, the savings, I would think, would be, yeah, somewhere closer to, yeah.
I got you. Okay, yeah, I had a question about the 1.5% in a second. But I guess what I'm asking too, when you look at 14.8, right? That's 14.8 million down there in the right corner. That's 10 years out. And that is in $2,016, right?
Yes.
So, in fact, it's in $2,026, it's gonna be less, right? I mean, that's, or, I'm sorry, it would be changed. It's, so it is constant. Okay, I got you. Never mind. So the 1.5% then, is that, is that too aggressive? I mean, is that even realistic?
So, when we, if the board gives us direction to include some of these changes, when the actuaries do their valuation, they will not be using the 1.5%. I think what we would experience is, let's say, the next 25 years, we did have that low inflation environment. Our rates are gonna change each time they do their valuation, and we will save additional funds. But that was a lowest because that has been what the current CPI has been, maybe even lower than that in the last couple of years. So we just wanted to be able to share with the board where that impact could be. But my guess is, it's gonna be somewhere closer to, yeah, to assumption A.
Okay, great. So, the thing that we don't have here is the cost or loss to the employees, right? Because this is the savings to the school system. Do we have somewhere a sense of, if we did these things on slide seven, what would the cost to the employees be?
Actually, I do have the change in the benefit value on one of my slides. So, without any changes, on this particular chart, without any changes, the value of the current benefit would be $778,000. That's what that bar represents. With the changes, with a 2.3% COLA, the value is $728,000. Correct.
Over the, for typical?
For total active retirement period.
All right, so, okay. So I guess in general, I feel like I need more information to have a sense. Cuz that seems like you just, the costs, we can, if we made the changes on slide seven, the cost to an employee who is, I mean, what employee is this for whom it costs $50,000?
So, this is a employee with, at age 60, with 30 years of service, and their final average salary being $98,000. So we took the top end of the teacher's scale and said, if this employee stayed with the school system for 30 years, and the value of their VRS hybrid contributing the minimum contribution, including the ERFC benefit, would see a total value of, as I mentioned, $778,000. That's the current value. That's the current bar, with 50% of that being paid by the employee. And with the changes that were presented on slide seven, I believe, that value with using assumption A, 2.3% COLA, is $728,000.
Okay, but as a, I'm gonna have to think about that cuz I'm, maybe I'll get back so that I understand what that means. Because doesn't it depend on how long that employee?
This takes an average lifespan of an employee retiring at age 60.
Okay, all right, thank you. So, just one more thing. I mean, I, the information that I really feel like I need in order to make these kind of decisions is that sort of thing, what's the cost to the employees? And I also feel like I, at least for one, need that input from our employee associations. Because I think on questions of salary and benefits and compensation, I think, you know, I wanna be very much guided by what our employees suggest. These are values decisions, value decisions that we're making, you know? What do most of our employees expect? And what would they like to continue to have? So I hope that we will hear from our employee associations on this.
Okay, we are almost out of time. I have Strauss, Corbin Sanders, Evans, and I also see Pearl Chick. I'm gonna ask my board members, how much more time do you wanna have tonight? How much more time do you wanna have? So you wanna end absolutely at 6:30? Raise your hand if you support that. Okay. I said 6:30. I mean, you all raised a hand for 6:30. So I'm gonna, in the middle of a sentence, I'm gonna call it quits at 6:30. Okay, so with that in mind, Mrs. Strauss, we may not get to all board members, just Mrs. Strauss.
Okay, I think I'm just gonna listen to everybody else. I went back and was reading the consultant study. And I just, at the moment, I have too many questions to even ask them. So, I'll let everybody else go ahead.
I have Corbin Sanders.
Yes, thank you. And thank you for explaining this chart and the impact on employees. Because the way I look at this, it sounds like the current, if I look at the chart, the current contributions, the employee contributes 50% of what they realize in their retirement. So, what we're talking about is changing the commitment from the system to, as a commitment to how much they will generate. So we're actually moving the bar of an employee contributing 50% to actually they're going to be contributing, if it's $50,000 and it's 378, I think you're actually adding another like 12% more of the employee contribution over a course of a lifetime to that chart, or significantly more. And then, at the same time, last year, when we looked at total, at the compensation on salaries, we were focused on our initial tranche getting to halfway to where the delta is. So, I guess my question would be, we got halfway, which was $100,000 over the course, or maybe $115,000 over the course of a career, because it was originally over $200,000 different, right? Salaries, okay. So we put money in, and we hope we got to only having a hundred, you know, half that. So it's a hundred and something. But now with this, in the retirement part, we're taking $50,000 back. And so, that's a little disconcerting to me. I would like to see a little bit more in the actuarial, to see what's happening there. I also would like to understand a little bit more from our employers' groups as to where they're at on this. Because, you know, I personally like the combination of people putting their own contributions in, as well as the system making a commitment. But it seems like we're getting that out of balance with this. And so, going forward, if you can give us a little more clarification on that, I'd appreciate it. And then the other thing is, that for our younger employers that would not necessarily, you're saying they don't necessarily want an EFRC, I would throw something on the table just because I have a recent college graduate who got her first job, and they said, well, you have a choice. You can either contribute to your benefit plan, your pension fund, or we'll do matching for your, paying off your college debt up to the same level as what we would pay into a pension. And so, I wonder if we ever looked at something like that for our younger teachers.
Ms. Evans? Ms. Evans?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to make sure I'm understanding of slides eight and nine. So, just wanna, if we go to slide nine. So, is this telling me that if we, if we make these various changes, I think there are about four changes in here, three or four changes, for both groups A and B, in the first year, we might save $7.3 million? Is that what that?
Probably closer to A. This is where we did provide that low environment inflation, but we believe it's gonna be closer to A.
So, but depending, but if we have low inflation, then we would save the 7.3 if we have.
Except when the actuaries actually do their valuation, because we're gonna be setting it CPI up to 4%, they will not be running their valuation using a 1.5% CPI, unless they know that that's what we have been experiencing.
Okay. So if you look at the, so in the long-term, the long-term change, six-plus years, so, six years out, we would be saving, with the higher inflation assumption, $9.5 million a year?
Correct.
So, why is that the exact same as if we only had one set of employees?
Because the saving is dependent on which employee groups are within the plan. So, with the new hires, it takes longer to turn over the folks that are already in ERFC 2001. Whereas when you include the non-vested employees, we've already turned over 8,000 employees cuz you're impacting the non-vested employees right away. With the new hires, everyone will still be in the old. With the new hires, everyone will still be in the old plan with the CPI of 3% fixed. And then only the new hires will have the change in their benefits of the CPI plus or up to 4%. So it takes longer for your demographics within that plan to turn over to the new plan of CPI plus or up to 4%. I'm sorry, I keep saying plus. Does that make sense? We're turning over the people quickly within that plan. Currently, everybody in that plan has a fixed 3% COLA. But when you touch or impact the non-vested employees, we've already turned over 8,000 of those employees to the new plan, the new CPI.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
I have a Ms. Perchick.
I did, I'm, I think Ms. Heinz asked a few of my questions, so thinking about that, I did want to see the actual impact to employees. Related to that, I don't know, Dr. Ramey, if you're able to address what you foresee, maybe possible impact on hiring and retention of these changes? Fun question, I know.
I think that's the question that the board is, is discussing. And so, I mean, I wish I had a, a crystal ball to, to see that. But that's, it's very hard to, to predict. And it would depend on, on where the board came down or what the path they wanted us to take.
Okay. Related to that, do you feel it would be helpful at all? Because part of it has been the communication. As an older millennial, I know I've changed from what I was looking at to where I am now. I do not have retirement anymore on this board. So is, would it be helpful whether through the WABE guide or other organizations to say, I'm looking at it now? It does not include anything about benefits or retirement.
I think a couple of things that I'd, I'd bring up there is part of our strategic plan was trying to do a better job of educating our employees about this benefit and why this is important to their long-term future. Because I think that's some of the challenge we have, right? So this January, we will be reporting out a new structure. What is the full value of being employed in FCPS? Which is something we've never done before. That's one piece of that, better educating our employees. And then ERFC, and Jean, you've reported on this before. They're doing a lot more to, to get out into our schools and out into our workplaces to help educate our employees more. You'll see a lot of, in fact, you all are doing a great job. I've seen a lot more of their communications and materials getting into the hands of our employees. So there is a, a strategy that's being executed there to make sure our, our employees better understand this benefit. Did I miss anything, guys, down at the end?
I would just say that even before this conversation, we know we need to do more of that outreach. We know that the, you know, the mandatory 8% contribution, that only like less than 7% of our employees are, are making that additional amount that the, the division matches, that additional 4%, that gets up to 12. And so we know, yes, VRS, but even, right, so separate from this conversation, we know that we're not getting enough information out regarding some of the benefits that our employees could currently take advantage of.
And I guess just wondering, I mean, I'm assuming that maybe they never look at the WABE guide when looking at us. But just in comparison, because it is something that we are able to offer that many of our Montgomery County and others that are way above us in salary cannot offer.
We're going to be putting together in the WABE guide, one of the things that we do is we do a comparison of the employer cost of benefits for employees that are hired at a hypothetical salary. So we have that analysis. The WABE guide is just being released. So we'll provide a budget question response where we compare the employer cost of benefits.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, with that, let me just make one comment. Thank you for your work. You know, obviously, obviously, we got a, we have a more discussion to do on this one. And I welcome that opportunity in December as well. But having said that, having said that, that I personally would not support a making changes for the current employees. As to the future employees, I'm open to a, you know, further discussion of, for the current employees, I'm pretty much have a closed mind. So with that, this work session is adjourned.
If anyone else who's here would like their budget toolkit before you leave, we have them here. Otherwise, we're happy to put it in the school board office so you don't have to carry it home tonight.